This one, the gray one.
It's just brown.
No, quite much. But the gray one is just a little cat. Isn't that gray one? All right. She's got the light. She probably doesn't have it. She don't give you see the color.
All right. We're recording. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the planning commission for September 11th, 2019. Stand up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Do we have a... I don't see why not. Yes. Let our hands... The third moment. Silence. Silence to 9/11. Yeah. Remember, okay? Yes.
Hey, Raymond, I'm only excited.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, yes. Yeah. Here.
Lee, Brayley's here.
Cynthia Brownie here. Wendy Germsen here.
Forrest Dini here.
All right. So today we're just continuing our discussion on the outdoor lighting ordinance, accessory buildings, and parking requirements. So the first item is discussion and action items. These are all things we have set hearings for in two weeks, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we're just kind of trying to nail down what we're wanting to do so we can be well-prepared for the hearings in two weeks. So the first item is discuss outdoor lighting.
This piece of paper here, it has all the acceptable and unacceptable lighting. Should go at the end of our 10, our code. It's a... It has an excuse.
Well, I know, I like to check it.
Yeah, I do too, and I think it's really good, and it should go in every building for that. And I'd like to talk to Jessup Canyon about the ones they have out at, the same guy who built in Toronto. They have streetlights three feet high to light the sidewalks and the light pants. Something like that to go in planned developments with streets and curves.
Okay, and I saw that there were various comments throughout the shared doc. And, yeah, that Janet, you said that we should include examples, acceptable lighting.
Is this International Dark Sky Association, is that the page you were showing, or is that...
This is called, this is shielded lighting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is dark skies.
From them.
Yeah. Yes, but we should all want this.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because this is, and I don't want anybody to have any excuses when they start building.
Right.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I've got neighbors that have floodlights that come in my living room, I don't appreciate it.
Yeah.
And driving around a dark to see that RV that you've been talking about, and the house on the corner with the floodlights, I agree with you, Margaret, on that one too. In fact, your husband's going to file a nuisance complaint for me.
Under control.
But there shouldn't be any excuse on any new building.
So as far as the code we have right now, I know we're wanting to pretty much use the dark skies one as, as the bible of lighting.
The Design Annual.
Yes, and then we're wanting to, I mean, we'll have this, that kind of what gives the gist of it.
That just kind of gives us a starting point, an overview, and then I don't, I read through it, I didn't see anything that was...
That contradicted.
...contradict with the other ideas.
So maybe somewhere in the...
We just need something stated.
Yes.
The IDA is our outdoor light ordinance. Yeah.
I don't know if it would go in the purpose, or maybe in the scope and applicability. Or under, yeah, 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 I was just going to say, that sounds like that's where...
That should be in there.
So all outdoor electrically powered illuminating devices shall be in solemn performance with the provisions of the Apple Valley Town Ordinances, including but not limited to the Luminaries and the dark sky, whatever it specifically calls.
Whatever it's called.
Which is attached.
Yes.
That much of lighting, acceptable?
Yes.
And this is the... This exists.
Yeah, the IDA MLO.
Actually from the MLO.
So, yeah, that would be a good little word to put right there.
Thank you, I haven't read through it.
And then the rest of it, you know, is just kind of the highlights.
Yeah, well, it's just...
Well, I noticed this didn't have two examples. I think the examples...
No, they don't. So the examples aren't part of the MLO? They're not attached to the rest of the, where did you find the examples?
In the MLO.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know if we had to put it separate.
But they didn't have it as well as it said, it was good.
Oh, okay. Okay, and before she said something like, would it be an improvement to change 1800 and 1900 lumens to 1200 and 600, or 1500 and 750? Does it give us lumens in the dark sky manual?
It doesn't mention it, but it's some kind of by zone, by purpose.
Okay.
So it's kind of all over the place, but they probably know all about the rules.
So, yeah, I know, I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's...
Whether it's commercial residential, parking, or...
Yeah, they've got four or five zones there, and I'm not sure that's really what we need to do, but...
It just covers every possibility.
Then we'd have to map out where do we want Zone 3 and...
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Well, it's, we don't know. I don't...
Well, it's a major commercial, that's probably...
But...
It's a big issue.
But 1800, I forget how many watts that is, 120 watts or something?
120, I think.
Yeah.
Is there a chart?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there's, we've got this list on here somewhere, Jan came up with a link, so, yeah, 1800 would be 120 watt.
Are you sure about that? I don't even have that anymore.
Oh, it looked handy, so I took it.
Find your speaker. 900, what is it?
Well, I would suggest, yeah, at the 12, that would be...
100 watt?
Yeah, well, I had that figured out at one point, but that was just like... 1200, I don't know, well, it'd be 240 watt bulbs.
Okay, so 80.
Yeah, or 80, if you can come up with 80, I don't worry to do that.
Yeah.
That's all we need.
Well, you're going to be 240 watt bulb?
And that seems like a fair amount of light.
Yeah.
But you thought one point's that, I...
I'm not real sure what it was, I mean, I know we want to keep dark skies, but I read through this, and it seems to be pretty good, I mean, it could use some changes, but I don't know. In other words, I think 1800 seems a little much, but...
Well, I think a lot of it has to do with the fixture, if it's down pointing, it's not really going to be affecting you.
Downpointed and shielded, yeah, yeah.
Maybe it doesn't matter what size you have in there, if it's shielded that well, I don't know.
Like a bullet?
Yeah.
Bullet light?
100 watts does not list it on there, but...
No.
No.
Oh, yes it is, it says 1500 lumens.
Okay.
Which would be, that's a possibility, that would be a...
Like in between the two?
Yeah. I think something in the center would go down 1500 and 750, what would 750 be? Not a good example there.
50.
A 50 watt bulb, it's a Sunday.
You need a 60. 1200.
But how much, you know, here's the problem, I don't know how much... Incandescent light bulbs are going to be used in outdoor lighting these days, so I'm not sure that is really all that helpful.
Well, the LEDs can be, you can, there's a formula that tells you how many watts it is.
Right.
I don't think the wires could affect anything.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it was women and lumens, is that's more simple.
Yeah, it's more of the base language.
But a 60 watt bulb, they've got a 900 lumens, though, really bad, it's closer to 750 or 800 after it's been used for a few days anyway.
Well, are we wanting to leave it 1800 and 900, or are we wanting to try to bump it down a level, or?
I think 15 is fine, 100 watt bulb is pretty great.
Yeah, I think 15 is good.
Okay, so 15 instead of 18, and then what's for the lower end? There's not such a thing as a...
Or you could just leave it 900 for that matter, because that's a 60 watt bulb.
Okay, so just change 1800 to 1500.
Because 1800 is somewhere around 40 watt.
Apparently it's not.
I didn't think so. Your eyes will adjust to pretty much any light.
And then, again, I don't know if I'm reading it wrong, but when it said the maximum height of the luminaries may not exceed 25 feet, my comment was just, we want lights as tall. Get my feet up.
I agree with that.
It just went out, if they're pointing straight down, they're within code.
Yeah.
Even if they're 25 feet in the air.
That's just the height of the house.
Yeah. Say you have a barn.
They're pointing straight down below the right.
As long as it's shielded and going straight down, and not heading out.
Right, which we've already said.
Right, but here it's restricting the height. Because sometimes it can be up on a hill, it can be 25 feet, and add a little bit of shield, but you can still, as you're driving by, it's still on your face, so I guess that's why, how do we make it so that's not the case.
And I've got my house, my porch lights 25 feet up there.
So I think if they're shielded, so they just shine straight down.
They have 34 watt bulbs. I don't want people up there.
Well, then that's, that's fine, that was just my question.
Yeah, and they're not...
So as long as they're... All right, and then we're still then changing all 1800s to 1500s, right?
Yeah.
I'd like to try to see if that's right.
Can you see that bulb?
I would like to see feet of after 3 there in that formula, because that totally lost me there for a while. I couldn't figure out what they were talking about there.
Well, I guess that part of the formula is that it says 3 plus d divided by 3, where d is the distance in feet.
Right, but didn't say what 3 is, it just said 3. They should say 3 feet, I think, but... I figured that out after a while, but I'm just trying to see if somebody haven't said and say, well, okay, value of 3 what?
I guess I just, yeah, I guess I just figured it because it said what d stands for, it's distance in feet, so...
Yeah, well, I admit, you get there eventually, it would be simpler...
Yes, it's all feet.
To put it in there. Because d is defined in feet, but it just said the value 3, well, what, 3 apples plus d divided by 3?
And that would just be silly.
It's like a butter lighter math.
So if I, so if I read that correctly, say you're 25 feet off your property line, divided by 3, which is roughly 8.
Uh-huh.
So you can't go more than 8 feet high.
11.
Oh, plus 3.
Plus 3.
Okay.
Plus 3, feet. I'm trying to get the feet in there.
Well, I don't care if we put feet in there, I just...
I think it saves your thinking.
We don't want to think.
Anything that says that's something, it's good.
We don't mind thinking, but somebody reading this is going to say, whoa.
Kind of like what I did, I just went, what?
So, yeah, you're right, it'd be a lot of feet.
Okay.
Unless, well, yeah, it'd be a lot of feet.
All right, and then, let's see. And then Janet, you said to add somewhere in there, what's this, to be directed toward residential buildings or adjacent or nearby land?
The sentence sounds convoluted to me.
Okay, so let me read it.
You're a yearling.
Well, it isn't content. So we need to change that 18 to 15.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's two.
Yeah, there's two.
I think there's one in here.
So there's three altogether, huh?
That is a sentence in this.
That's probably in the turning generator section.
Yeah. The sentence never ends. Do we have something that defines that the light must go directly down, because A1 here doesn't say anything, it says direct light above a horizontal plane, but it doesn't say anything about the light go directed downwards.
It's not supposed to go over the horizon, or is it?
I'm sure it says it somewhere, let's see.
The horizon can be, Janet, you're up on a hill.
Yeah.
What about the guys down in the flats looking up at your house?
I got 34 watt bulbs everywhere in my house.
All right, maybe you're not an example, but...
You're a bad example.
Say, say somebody dug that, you know, they're up on a hill, it's horizontal, like you get up on the hill and you look straight, but everybody down in the flats is looking up at your lights.
Right.
On the way to our house.
So you had motion detectors all outside it, and then I came home one night and saw it, and I went, this isn't fair to the rest of my neighbors, because I am higher...
Right.
...than most people. So they should have it pointed down and shielded.
But we don't have anything in here that says, it says above the horizon, but...
We should have it pointed down.
Doesn't say pointed down, just...
Have you know Jack's old house...
Pointing that out, it's okay, that's what you guys want it, just...
No, I think if that's what you intend, you need to spell it out.
Yeah.
We need to spell everything out, yeah.
Somewhere it says it, but is it in the actual building part of the code? I mean, we can say it again, just to double check, but...
Well, this is the design factor, so...
It's in the guide, if we adopt it.
Yeah.
If we adopt the guide, it'll probably fill that in there.
It does say that.
Does it?
Yeah.
So rather than us rewriting the whole guide, we're trying to just clean up our portion.
But we could add a little, like, thing after it says, shall not emit any direct light above a horizontal plane through the lowest direct light emitting part of the luminaries, and shall be shielded and faced down, or something, however, whatever the proper terminology is for lights. That way it's at least...
Just put, result in lighting downward or something, shall be shielded and pointed downward.
When they're talking about the horizontal plane, I think they're saying the bottom, the bottom of the light fixture, when the light comes out, and there isn't any way to control it unless you got a laser. After it comes out, it's, it's going to go, it's not going to all just go down, it comes...
We're actually not wanting just with these, we want with all lighting, should be downward faced.
Well, practicality wise, if you're looking at light, there's, it's either going to direct downward.
Right.
It's going to be shielded and then have glow outward this way.
But that's what I said.
Or it's going to glow all over the place.
It's going, it's going to go outward any way you look at it.
Right.
Maybe shielded helps a lot, we all agree with that, but once you get past that bottom of that light fixture, it's going to spread out.
Spread out.
So somewhere it says you can't light your neighbor's property, I'm paraphrasing that, I don't...
Well, yeah, there's a little bit of that in Section B, section to control glare.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly. So you've got to take that into account, I don't know how you do that, and that's what Jan was trying to rewrite here.
Well, that's in the section for exceptions to control glare, but we're wanting to put that into not exceptions. So I'm wondering if it's feasible just to put under Section A, make a number 3 that says, you know, something about luminaries.
All luminaries will be shielded.
How about blood, so people in water, people in government. What light shall be shielded and pointed down, because...
That's all you need.
Well, but we, I think we want all...
It is there all with...
Eye?
Yeah.
Pointed down.
Yeah, so all luminaries, so that covers everything.
Right.
It shouldn't be all, because you can't get a shielded spotlight, for like yard spotlights and yard spotlights, most people use those temporarily, if they're going out.
But you can't...
With a yard spotlight, if you just direct them about a 60 degree angle, so that they don't go more than 15 feet outward.
That's what this one does.
There is a little exception thing in there, that it says, any luminaries with a lamp or lamp switch, da-da-da-da-da, and may be used without restriction on light distribution on mountain heights, except that if the spot or flood luminaries rated 900 lumens or less are aimed, directed, or focused such as to cause direct light from luminaries to be directed toward residential buildings or adjacent or nearby land to create glare or acceptable zone. I think that kind of covers the exception that, you know, as long as it's not shining into someone else's house or whatever. So I think that exception there covers your temporary motion sensor lights.
Cynthia, do we have anything that says about, like, that the floodlights have to be a temporary thing, because we have people that have so many that they can see it from the space, though.
That ought to be, that really ought to be on there, that they go out, they have to have a motion sensor that's on a timer that, you know, can't exceed more than, you know, X amount, you know, time. I mean, unless somebody's doing a party and they need a volleyball game out back for, you know, an hour or two, but it's something that can't be left on all night, you know?
The horse is afraid of the dog.
Did it divorce?
I've never seen a horse afraid of the dog.
Your neighbor hates your horse, it's a random part.
He's trying to rewrite what he's at the time.
Yeah.
Hey, also on the lumens, on, for like our carriage lights.
What, what light?
The carriage lights, like the lights on the side of your doors, we ought to put lumens to 600, not 900. 900 is really bright.
The 60 watt bulb.
That, that 60 watt bulb will, I mean, if you're 30 feet from your neighbor, it's going to shine at his house.
It has to be down light.
Yeah, it's going to be down light.
The light, we're just finishing up this house over here for Diane Hope, and we have the farts next door, and he has a little observatory, and he is so flipping out about every little tiny light, it's not even funny, and he's getting a little bit eccentric, but we're trying to do the best we can to, you know, keep good neighbors with everything. But a 600 lumen bulb would give you about 20 feet, even if it's kind of in a downward direction, that's basically the light you'll get from, it's about 20 feet. So most of our setbacks are, you know, 25 or so, I mean, I guess unless you're a side yard, I mean, I guess you can go up to 10, but not very many people push it all the way to the 10 foot side yard, unless I guess you go to your senior's yard. But anyways, most of our, everybody's throwing LED nowadays, but most of the bulbs that are 60 watt equivalent are 600 lumens, that's, I mean, that's just pretty much the standard.
So how many watts is 1500 lumens?
100 watt.
It's like a 300 watt bulb, or a 200 or something like that.
This chart says it's 100 watt, you get just a...
That's still awful bright.
100 watts is pretty bright.
I say the washer is better, myself, but...
Well, I mean, if you use it for a spot floodlight, and it's temporarily, I mean, I have some on my house that's trying out for my barn for my house, so if somebody's, you know, coyotes out there, I can flip them on, I can see clear in my barn, but it's only temporary, and it's on a, you know, a motion sensor if it does get left on, turns off after five minutes, even if somebody leaves it on.
We don't want like that. I don't want to go on like five seconds.
Okay, so do we want to go 1200 and 600?
On the spots, I don't know that we necessarily want to limit that, as long as we limit the timing, or that we put the aspect on a motion sensor of some sort, something that can't be left on all night.
Yeah.
That's everybody concerned, it's an option.
Yes.
So as long as we can't leave it on all night, and as long as it's on some kind of timer, that it turns off after X period of time.
Add it's pointing down.
Okay, give me numbers, I don't care, just let's get this hammered out. So the control of glare, it says any luminaries will lamp rated at a total of more than 1500 lumens, and all flood or spot luminaries with a lamp rated at more than 900 shall not emit a direct light above a horizontal plane through the lowest direct light emitting part of the luminaries. So I think if we still make that 1200, it says with more than 1200, shall not emit a direct, so yeah, I think we can still make it 1200 and 600, because that gives us more than in that case.
True, true.
And more than 600, so I think we can, I think we can make these 1200 and 600 and still have room for other types of lighting, with the exceptions and the more than.
Right, is there more, then you go to Section B, and that's all your exception?
Are we still going to add 3, that all light shall be shielded and pointed downward?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
And, and then even add a second sentence that's saying, you know, spotlights and motion lights should be temporary timed by a motion sensor or something, that way it's said temporary.
Motion sensor.
Yeah.
Don't you think we have to look at that all lighting, for like the carriage lights, people go spend a lot of money on carriage lights, what if they go get really dim bulbs, that they'll shine more than 15 feet from the house anyways, so why do they need to shield that, then, why do they got to go change their fixture?
I think we need to shield everything, keeping it for somebody who...
Not everybody knows how to... Not everybody always, not everybody follows it.
It's easier to get a dimmer bulb because it has to change your whole light fixture and a lot less expensive.
Well, this will be when people are building.
No, I understand, but have you gone and looked at some of the ones that have full shields? They're ugly.
Hey, I have full shields and mine are nice.
I do too.
Yeah, if you have a parapet roof and it matches, a lot of people don't have parapet roofs. That style doesn't match.
That's, that's what, we're following the dark sky protocol, so.
Yep. We're gonna have, not only his, his sanitarium, but we're gonna have one across the street.
Oh, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, so we really need to.
Just clarify something here on number one. It says emit any direct light above the horizon, and you go on the rest, what'd you say, above the horizon and shall be pointed downward? Instead of doing all the other, the direct light emitting part of the luminance. On item one. Make it short.
Okay, so forget the whole horizontal plane bit?
Yeah, go, above the horizontal plane and shall be pointed downward.
Oh, and shall be, oh, okay.
Yeah, just cut off the rest of it, makes it easier, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Well, you, you're, that's redundant, it's, because if you can't emit light. Well, then you're adding, you're through the lower. For sure, then you're going to add to the lowest direct light emitting part of the, you know, just if you have a pointed downward after, you know. If you don't have it pointed downward, then it's not, it's emitting light above the horizontal. Yeah, that's right, that's what you're saying, just add the shall be pointed downward period on all the lighting. And across that horizontal? Yeah, just take the bottom line out. Read it to me, how, how, how you do it? Okay, it says, it says here, it says emit any direct light above the horizontal plane and shall be pointed downward, just eliminate the rest of it.
Yeah, I like that. It's more straightforward. We can put shielded too, shall be shielded and pointed downward. Because although that might be redundant sometimes, you might need an extract.
Sometime you need it.
You need to mean the same thing three times.
Yeah, that's whatever.
And we can get rid of the confusing part.
I just wanted to say three feet, now I'm out of here.
We, I, I wrote your feet in there, so. All right, so we don't need to, we can put, take that part out of my add it's number three. But I think we probably still want to make some kind of stipulation with spotlights to be on, you know, motion timers and temporary. So where would be the best place to?
I think it's a temporary operating.
Well, it's not temporary if it's built into your home.
Well, if it's not a timer.
Motion sensors are temporary. When I have spotlight on my deck in my backyard, I only turn it on when I absolutely need it.
They're, they're temporary use, they're not, uh, every day, all day.
They are, they are on my driveway, but they go out in ten seconds or something, twenty seconds.
And what it does is just, it just directs it thirdly. Individually.
Cause I got two, three, four, five, five of them.
Okay, so.
And so we're changing this other eighteens or twelves?
I guess we're just, yeah, changing all the eighteens and nines to twelves and sixes.
So paragraph B would say if it's twelve hundred or.
Yeah, are we changing B also?
I don't know why, or less.
Cause that other one is more than twelve hundred. And then this one would be twelve hundred or less, so I think we're covered.
Well, we're just, we're, we're saying that, uh, if it's less, then you don't have to look at the height and.
As, as long as it's not affecting anybody.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it talks about glare, motor vehicles, blah, blah. But yeah, the way, the way I read that, if you had something that was less than what it says here, you put whatever height you want it looks like. If it doesn't affect it.
Yeah.
Which would be hard to do, but.
Okay, so we still want like the number three that mentions, um, spot, yeah, spotlight, floodlights.
Timers or follow cells.
That floodlights or spotlights should be temporary and utilize a timed motion sensor or something, is that the proper terminology?
Temporary. Shielded and pointed downward.
Yeah, yeah, for temporary use.
But that sounds like I'm putting it up for a weekend party.
Actually, the.
Well, temporary use, if you turn it on for a short period of time.
Oh, I know, but temporary use has its own kind of connotation in code. Cause temporary use can be for just like a weekend.
Mining a building site or something for two or three weeks.
So I know what you're saying and I agree that that, that makes sense, but I don't wanna be confused with the, like, temporary permit kind of stuff, so.
We know what I'm confusing.
It talks about planning commissions, rendering, decision on temporary lighting.
Short-term lighting only.
Or timed device.
Timed lighting might be the best word for it, something like that.
Motion sensor or timed.
Yeah.
Timed device is good, I believe you're saying. So, um, we're gonna find it ten minutes.
At least I never had one before.
Well, then somebody else blocks the light. We're sitting in the backyard and our dog's running around all over the hill.
But yeah, it'd be good to have something in there, I thought we had something like that, I'm sure I'll see.
Okay, so floodlights. Okay, so if I have like flood or spotlights. Shall, shall let. I keep on changing my phrase. And I, and I have this motion sensor and or timed device, but how do I tie that in? One of them are spotlights.
Operated by.
Okay, shall be operated by. By a motion sensor.
Could you put short timed motion sensor? So it's on a motion sensor for the time for four hours, yeah, it's on a motion sensor.
I don't think we.
Well, even an hour is the only time. Most, yes, but if you don't stipulate how long the timeframe should be, that's where you run into a problem.
Five seconds? Were we doing a time, ten minutes?
About fifteen minutes here, I have to tell you.
Floods might trigger it again, can we just move it and then you'll always have the little minutes and you go back to the house. And it'll know it'll be off in fifteen minutes. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So number three under A, adding a number three. It says flood or spotlights shall be operated by a motion sensor and or timed device, comma. And then, it's not gonna sound clever. Um, event two, be on for only fifteen minutes, what's a better way to say that, let's see. Um, a motion sensor and or timed device with a fifteen minute limit.
Can you keep no more than fifteen minutes?
Not to exceed. Fifteen minutes. Well, it is too long, but.
Well, think of it this way, you're out there trying to change a tire on something that went flat, you're gonna need that much time.
So, yeah, but the problem is that, okay, so then you move a little bit and then that sensor comes back on and then you got another fifteen minutes.
Well, we're saying here, how you go back to the house, you're done, it's only gonna be on for fifteen more minutes.
Well, the motion sensor, that's one thing, but if you're on a timer, that's what we're saying, not to exceed fifteen minutes, fine.
Still better, still better than hours and all.
Right, I mean, either way, the minute you go to your house and you're no longer out there, in fifteen minutes, it's gonna turn on. That's what we're, that's our goal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as you're making movement out there, it's gonna stay on.
Most people won't even need that, but.
If you're out there, you need it, it'll stay on.
Most of them that you.
Can't say, you're out there working in your garden, but you need to live in the dark.
Okay. So then B one, we're changing, of course, the, everything to twelve hundred and six hundred. And then, um, the, the part that you marked Janet actually does make sense, but I'm wanting to change the end of that sentence because it does get kind of awkward there at the very end after that last comma.
I didn't do well in English.
No, 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 the, the sentence, the sentence is way, way, way long. And it doesn't, you start to lose the thread.
It does get there eventually.
Yeah. Well, let's put feet in there somewhere.
Yeah, they put three feet. Not only six feet this time. I see what you mean.
Yeah, I mean, it, it does make sense, but yes, it is awkward. Um, so then two luminaries used for public roadway elimination may be installed at a maximum height of thirty-four feet and may be positioned at that height up to the edge of any bordering property.
Thirty-four feet.
So this is for public roadway?
Yeah.
Streetlights.
No, we don't have any.
Uh, around here, but eventually.
Right.
Well, I'm sure there's probably some reason for the height and safety. That maybe somewhere has a, a company.
If a town spends money on it to put it in, we don't want somebody driving a tire with a bag over ripping them out.
I couldn't, um, take a picture of the one at my, if you ever driven out the high end side and see how nice those streetlights are.
They probably have them like not over the road, but off to the side, right? They're, but they're just off to the side, they don't hang over or anything.
They don't hang over, huh? I'd like to see all telephone poles go by by.
I think everything, new construction does.
Yeah, new construction should be all, all electric and everything should be underground.
Okay, so then it says luminaries used primarily for sign elimination and property elimination may be mounted on at any height to a maximum twenty-five feet regardless of the lumen rating. But we'll still have that it's supposed to be shielded and pointed downward from earlier on.
Right.
So that should cover that. Yeah. Okay, and then there weren't really any of the other. And C two, we just have an extra line in there that would sit. Oh, oh, move within, up, after, from.
Eliminated from within.
Yeah. Well, and I said something, do we wanna add a height limit, but that's addressed earlier, so. Then recreational facilities. That are like with fields. Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, we don't need that. Shall be fully shielded at the time and subject to. Do we have that in subsection?
Not really.
So it refers us to subsection B one, but in B one, it doesn't say anything about shielding.
Yeah. Maybe we change A to where it does, I don't know.
Well, now we have shielding in.
In A one, but.
Yeah.
But B one did not talk about shielding. Maybe it used that, I don't know.
Okay, so flood luminaries rated six hundred lumens or less is. Right now, cause that's the exception. Let's just wanna, yeah, change, change B one to A one? Okay. That's, that's a lot easier than trying to rewrite B one. Thank you, Lee, for keeping us on track with not having the cart before the horse yet again.
I really, Lee.
You're working smarter, not harder. All right, so yeah, we'll change that subsection, so with A one to the B one. And events should be complete, preferably by ten thirty or no later than eleven, so they can shut off those field lights whenever we get those, right? All right.
Well, and Terry, if we ever build one of those, that should come through the planning commission and, and we did work with all the stuff.
Yeah.
Make sure they know we're all on the same page. I would think.
So parking area lighting. Pole height, twelve to twenty feet is determined by the planning commission.
Too high.
Well, if you have a semi trailer, you're not gonna be down there twelve foot wide.
No, semi trailers are thirteen plus six inches.
Yeah. I think we have to leave it where it is, like you guys traditionally need.
All we have to do is just make sure those point in the downward direction, that, that's easy.
That's already defined, so.
There's one that says fully shielded, there's a parking light still.
Yeah, they've got several, uh, parking lights in here that are real nice.
And then.
The, the little blurb, it started two there, E two talks about water, but oh, well, maybe.
No, that's kind of funny.
But they don't have a city, you know, it's talking about water, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, we can take water job, just have the whole height flash design.
Correct, we've already talked about water.
And I guess that's the same for three, huh? Yeah, says watered again, yeah.
Well, but that does start to talk about water.
Where?
You see what I mean? Luminaries twelve foot, sixteen foot, four foot.
Oh, there's watts, okay, I didn't see where. Okay, then yeah, we'll leave watered alone now. Yeah. Okay.
Well, one hundred and five watts is what we decided, fifteen hundred.
That's per pole, you may have two lights on there.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, they may, they may have two heads on one.
Uh-huh, probably would before then.
Same thing, you may have two heads.
Two seventy-five. Well, there again, that's good.
Well, not to say that we won't have to tweak some. Well, not to say that we won't have to tweak some designs later, but I think any kind of improvements is good, and putting the dark skies stuff with it too is a good first step.
And there, there is standards for parking area lighting, so I'm sure that's all we're saying.
And so then, there weren't any other comments until the exceptions in G. That the following shall be exempt from the requirements of this ordinance.
We've got a word missing from F1.
Oh, F1.
Horizontal plane is included at the end of the sentence.
Um, the horizontal.
Plane.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Some of the words, it says holiday lighting, where some communities set a timeframe, like October first through March first.
Yeah.
We just need to come up with a date. And Lee had a good point, we want Halloween, not Halloween.
I know.
St. Patrick's Day, that's the one.
So, well, we really see people decorating for like Halloween and Christmas, right?
Yeah.
Do you ever decorate for anything else, buddy?
Well, I used to do Halloween, but, you know, there's not any kid that goes trick-or-treating, so I don't do it Halloween anymore. But I am in the trunk-or-treat.
Yeah, so we're just gonna...
That's right, then.
Well, not so say, it takes some, it's not a decorating Halloween. We could just kind of say, holiday lighting, October through December or something, or...
October through January, so it gives them a little bit of time to take it down.
Okay, a little bit of time to take it down.
Right.
Okay. So October.
We don't need to go to March, but, I mean, Jan, maybe it has to be down by the end of January.
They don't have to take it down, they can just not plug it in, can't they?
Yeah.
Right.
Which most people do anyway, they don't take it down, but just leave it up.
We're talking about, just leave it up and keep the switch off.
Right.
Well, some people have, have already told me that, like Frank has current lights that he lights up for Valentine's Day, St. Patrick's Day.
And he only does it for them one day.
Well, and this just says that, I mean, 'cause, yeah, sometimes it just is gonna be for a day, and it might fall with the wattage and lumens anyway, so... Just wanting to make sure people's houses are light, lit up like the Griswolds at Christmas here. Suck all our power for the rest of it.
Are we doing October one or October?
October three, January one.
October one through January one?
No.
I think October one, New Year's, I wasn't thinking that through.
Through February one.
February one. October one through February one.
That's my month. How about October through January?
I know, I, I start, I start like October.
You're hitting pretty crazy, calm down.
It's a good thing you go off at night.
I think at least February one.
Now, on A.
Hey, when you were talking about horizontal plane, man, we gotta put in there the decree providing, so nothing more than thirty degrees. Forty-five puts you away out here, thirty degrees puts you right here, which only gives you so many feet away from more of the light than that.
That's about eight feet, right?
Depends on how high the pole is, but yeah, something like that, but forty-five gives you a long ways out, and that, that's still downward, but that's quite a way. So if we say it can't exceed thirty degrees from the fixture, that should limit how far out that fixture's going to shine.
Yeah, that's all in this dark skies thing that we're gonna...
We don't wanna have to rewrite that whole thing.
Okay. November twenty-ninth through January fourth.
Well, that was good.
All right. So...
You don't, I, I don't believe in putting lights up until Thanksgiving is over, myself.
Well, you gotta put them up ahead of time.
No.
No, it's like, hey, after Thanksgiving. Do, do you know how long it takes me to put my Christmas tree up?
You don't have to plug it in, you don't turn it on.
It's, it's like a...
Too much.
Well, you can go home tonight, start putting them up, but don't plug it in.
We're low-key in my house to put luminaries up, which just has your light candle, though.
There's quite a few people that like to decorate in the hallway, though, so.
Pretty dim.
Three hours. No, it takes me a long time.
If you spend a lot of time decorating, you don't wanna leave them up for one week tonight, you don't show off your work.
No, I wanna get them up by Thanksgiving, you know, turn them on by Thanksgiving, and then turn them off January first.
Yeah, holiday lighting, and then just put parentheses, October one.
I would like to listen to this.
Okay, okay, we have you through that. So... You're just saying to delete the number one fifty-nine?
Yeah, I don't know where that came from. There's a one three two nine.
Is that like a code, there's a number?
Well, I think maybe, I think maybe it's an old page number or something. There's a one sixty down there somewhere else.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know, I think it's just old page numbers are best I can figure.
Yeah.
Where are you looking at?
I agree with Forrest, she did.
Joking for me.
Yeah, and with the non-conform, effective data non-conforming luminaries, and then at the top of the next page.
B.
Yeah, B, take the random number one fifty-nine out.
And just any non-conform, non-conforming.
Okay, so Forrest, you said to consider some timeframe for compliance after ordinance date?
Yeah, I know I've read some other towns' ordinances, and they, they want everyone to follow the ordinance after a certain period of time.
And no grandfathering in on you.
Well, your grandfathered in for a certain period of time, now, the problem being, how are you gonna enforce that in a small town? But... Well...
Unless they build a shield.
Yeah.
I wouldn't wanna have a huge bird on somebody's leg. Whole list somehow, spray cans, make it break.
Yeah, you...
I got news for you, that's how...
Get rich, build an aluminum shield.
It's cheap.
Good, good price.
And line it with a aluminum foil.
Well, why do you get the marshmallow?
You're actually passing out your own, that's a cap.
Oh, I was thinking, I was thinking longer than that.
A year?
I would say it had a replacement, kind of a replacement, I mean...
I've, I've read four, five, six years, I mean, it's not something you wanna force people to do right, you know, but this is just something to consider. I've read a couple of them that make you do it eventually, rather than... But there is, it's an enforcement nightmare, because now Rich has to go around and say, well, this, this life is not conforming. They got six months or something, and it's like, that's a long work.
You have to have the data from the first complaint, you have to have your tape and trail date.
But, but if you read D, the, the, that's kind of what I'm getting at, was those non-conforming have to be fixed in ninety days.
Good for safety, yeah.
Right.
How's that?
And, and that's good, but I'm wondering if we should put something in above, three years or...
But it says the applicant must bring such fixtures into compliance with the code with any exterior building permit.
And or fixture replacement.
Or if they have to replace them.
When they have to replace it.
Now, maybe that's good enough, maybe that's, maybe that's the best way to go.
And or fixture replacement.
Yeah.
Okay. And then...
So are you adding replacements over on that?
Um, yeah, and in C, where it says, the applicant must bring such fixtures into compliance with the code with any exterior building permit and or fixture replacement. Oh, you're saying to replace the with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, such as the furniture.
And, and...
The manufacturer's.
Oh, and then delete the one sixty.
I just caught the manufacturers. Manufacturers you use still mostly. It's another R's.
Manufacturers. Manufacturers.
I wasn't going for selling.
I, I wasn't either, I was going through.
It looks like we should.
I know, I guess.
The one above us, the same, and just the manufacturer and drive.
Where's that in there? Oh.
I mean, manufacturer.
I'm gonna change my...
But number two, manufacturer and drive.
Well, this is Michelle's department, she'll clean it up.
Yeah, we just want, 'cause little things like that can be changed without any kind of hearing, so...
Right.
We just make sure we get the...
Right.
Oh, we, did we delete the one sixty there?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're just deleting the one sixty?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the strange letters is picked up somewhere.
Yeah, I see, they're illuminaries.
Well, yeah, just because they kind of did a combination of illumination and luminaire. So we got the illuminaires. So the illuminaires. So either call it luminaires or call it luminary, but, yeah, I think illuminaires is...
I think we should include in this a wa, a luminance to wattage, uh... Chart.
Yeah, put a little chart there.
Yeah, like I mean, Forrest.
Yeah, just as a guideline.
Yeah.
Just put it on the left, the, the ten, definitely.
I think, I think in that MLO, there's a...
Yeah.
Oh, oh. It is, but, uh, they'll probably go to this before they go to that.
So make it like ten point two six point oh nine oh.
Yeah. For documentation.
Yeah. All right, so are you feeling okay about having a hearing on this in two weeks?
Yeah.
Well, that, that one definition we just talked about, outdoor lighting, that's down at the bottom.
Okay.
Uh, that, that is...
That definition is outside area or object.
Are they talking about torches or what? I don't...
Yeah, it's all about seven-day lighting, and that, this, this whole ordinance is outdoor lighting, and then you read the definition, and there's nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Seven day?
What's that?
Oh, I see what you mean.
The nighttime illumination in an outside area or object by handmade device located outdoors that produces light by any means for a period of less than seven days with at least one hundred eighty days passing before being used again.
What the crap does that even mean?
I don't know what you're saying.
So, how do we want to define outdoor lighting? Because we can't use that definition right now.
Here's what I think they meant, I think they meant temporary, temporary outdoor lighting, and then just left out temporary. Does that make sense?
It's in here.
Yeah.
So all we need to do is just say temporary outdoor lighting instead of outdoor lighting. Unless you want two...
No, I think you're probably right.
Unless you want two definitions.
What do they mean by handmade device?
I know, I don't...
Capfire.
Torch.
Oh, okay.
Tiki torch.
But I think that's the whole thing.
Yeah, why do we need like four objects by each, we need five, so the nighttime illumination in the outside area located outdoors that produces light by any means.
Well, you're trying to define outdoor lighting, they weren't trying to define outdoor lighting. They were trying to find temporary. On the temporary outdoor lighting, it says, you said, but down at the bottom, you got there at the seven days, less than seven days, but at least a hundred eighty days passing before being used again. Right. But temporary.
The whole thing is stupid.
That, that's not outdoor lighting, that's temporary.
Yeah, why would you pay for a hundred eighty days before you can use it again?
Because it's temporary.
Yeah, but if somebody's out doing stuff outside, this week and the next week, they have to use it again.
That is not temporary.
Well, now, that's that bull, you can't put a hundred eighty days.
That hundred eighty days, they need to come out.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Well, all, what I'm saying is, is they're putting in there to say that you can have this light for seven days out of a hundred eighty, of this fixture, like everything else.
You can have a wedding reception in your backyard or something.
There you go.
But that's, but you don't need it to follow...
But it's, it's, it's handmade, so you're talking tiki torch, and you're having a barbecue, but you can't use it for the next six months? Give me a break, take the hundred eighty days.
See, that, that's not outdoor lighting.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it is, cap fires.
It says right there, any, any light, illuminates, and that's a handmade device. I mean, seriously, I mean, now you can be talking about tiki torch, and you can't burn it for one, every six months.
Maybe that's what they're talking about.
Right, take this stupid hundred eighty days down, that's ridiculous.
Why do we even need that one? Or a flashlight?
If you take that out, you have to take out the seven days.
Take it out.
Yeah.
Well, no, let's take out the whole. Well, not like that, we know what outdoor lighting is, so why do we even need that?
Yeah, okay.
We can use the one in the book.
The one in the, um, dark skies actually has a definition for outdoor lighting. And it says, lighting equipment installed within the property line and outside the building, the building envelopes, whether attached to poles, building structures, the earth, or any other location, and any associated lighting control equipment. So it's just a general definition for...
That's what this should say.
Yeah, but, so...
Is that a data of a hundred eighty?
No, I can't even do that.
If, if you wanted to leave that in, I would put temporary outdoor lighting, leave it in, but...
Yeah, temporary outdoor lighting's fine, but when you're gonna restrict it a hundred eighty days, that's all, that's the only one.
Okay, I would use your plug.
My office would define it, though.
We have a section that says events.
Yeah.
You got a section that says events and all this, that's part of your outdoor lighting, why would you even need that?
Yeah. I don't want to try to figure out the seven day, a hundred eighty day thing, so...
Well, that's why I brought it up, is because...
So, yeah, the executive decision, we're just going to put outdoor lighting...
But, yeah, outdoor lighting from that definition is...
And use the definition on page thirty-nine of the user's guide for outdoor lighting.
Page thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Okay, what do we need to say?
We're changing the definition.
We're taking that whole thing out and just using the...
We're putting it in a generic definition.
That was kind of my point.
It's kind of duplicated in, in the other, yeah.
Yeah, for lighting.
And, and if you're gonna label it, it needs to just say temporary outdoor lighting, which to me means seven day, that one.
And they described that kind of up with events, so, yeah. Okay, beating this thing to death, but the non-conformity clause that you've got in there on page six, it's all in place. Number C shows that ordinance does not recognize permanent non-conformity lights. And then it goes on to say that the applicant must bring such fixtures into compliance with the code within any exterior building permit. So in other words, the house lights are bad, but your shed lights are good. And then it says on residential structures, only new exterior fixtures on remodels or new... We're adding a bit.
We added to it.
So it says that the applicant must bring such fixtures into compliance with the code with any exterior building permit and or fixture replacement.
Okay, so is, is, is the nuts and bolts, is you're gonna expect everybody in town to change their light?
Eventually.
Eventually. Whatever their light fixture goes bad, they have to replace it with one that meets code.
Yeah.
Basically what it says.
So, as the light, as the light... So, as the light, as the light deems replaceable, then it has to meet code.
Or, or a remodel.
Okay, okay.
We're not gonna wait for a permit, you're gonna do it.
Okay, so you're not gonna make this broad stroke where everybody in town has to suddenly run down home.
And there are towns that do that, but just, we're not that big.
Okay, okay, just, just clarify.
I wonder, Mel, if we can cross off that first sentence, this ordinance does not recognize permanent non-conforming lights. I don't know, what's the point of that sentence?
I don't see in that...
See, that same one.
Something like a true English teacher.
Well...
Because we are...
Because we are gonna let people...
And we are recognizing and giving them the time limit, basically, but, I don't know, just kind of, that seems like a weird sentence to start.
Well, in other words, you're not grandfathering it in forever, ever, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, but I think the fact that it says all operable outdoor lighting that, that, that are considered to be non-conforming, and you must bring fixtures into compliance by one extension. So I think starting off with that sentence kind of...
Okay, don't cross it out, huh?
Yeah. I'd get the sentence.
The sentence.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, if you, if you last 30 years, well...
10 years, 30 years.
Unless we, somebody comes in and says, okay, well, now we're big, and we got enforcement, and you're gonna change things.
Or if they do. Okay, no, thank you.
If they really want it, they replace it.
So, we're okay with this going to a hearing then?
Agreed, yeah.
All right.
Can I bring up a point here?
Sure.
You know, to make my job easier, because evidently I'll be the one out there looking at this situation.
That's what I was trying to say earlier.
You know, and, uh, I've had some problems in the past, nothing really serious, but as far as the lighting itself, there is a meter, a luminous meter. Uh, maybe you should have bested a hundred bucks in a meter, so at least I can go around and check this lighting, and I do at nighttime, too. I'll, I'll check your lighting at night, and so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But as far as legal action, I've loaded a lot of nuisance complaints, and the thing of it is, sometimes I've come to the point, and showing the attorney, I've come to the point where going on people's property isn't always the best thing, unless you know the person. You've got contractors you're dealing with, and usually the owner needs to be notified, and not the contractor, when you deal with the owner of the property. So, uh, 30 days is fine, that's typical for me, uh, and, and then I need to double check it. I find out that sometimes when you have a floodlight, that, and this has happened in my area, the floodlight may be pointed down, it's fine, but then I walk, I go down the road a little ways, and they have a floodlight of the same type, only theirs is flooded out. People see floodlights, and they think they can do that, too, and they don't know there is rules behind where that light needs to go.
And that's when they get to be informed?
And that's when I have to go there and, and double check situations. Now, I do like Cedar Point. You'll notice a lot of their lights out there are decorated lights, and they're all pointing down, and it's really a nice drive-through. And then you get lights like out where I've got, and I've actually went to people's homes, and the, the plague of this has been the ones that's given me a little trouble, but that's fine. And the thing about it is, I've just asked them to, they don't need to have floodlights here, maybe in other areas they did, so I've asked them to turn it off, or, uh, just have it on for a limited amount of time, because lights aren't gonna be a problem.
Well, I think that's all kind of spelled out in our...
Yeah, and people don't know it, though.
Yeah.
That's my job to go around and let people inform them of the problem that it can create. So as, uh, we get more building and stuff, it, it creates a bigger problem, but I think...
That's why hopefully having the chart of approved design will help.
And I refer people to look up the town code. I've had people tell me there is no town code.
We're trying to get this going.
So I think the meter maybe would help going around and actually checking and see what, uh, what people would...
Oh, definitely.
We should give everybody one of these.
Absolutely.
Unacceptable, acceptable.
Yeah.
Or just put it under the...
Put it under water bill or something.
I agree.
Okay, so we do need to go on to the accessory building. And so we kind of had this hammered out pretty well, but some, we've had some, um, concerned citizens contact and write in, um, about not wanting these shipping containers at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, any.
Going in.
And, and so, I mean, it's just, if we're having to try to make something fit with all these bells and whistles, and adding, you know, paint, or a roof, or whatever, I mean, maybe trying to make it fit, it's, it's too much effort than just saying, no.
But our code states, no shipping containers, as it stands right now.
Can I add something to this? While you're looking at shipping containers, can I approach the bench and give you some pictures of shipping containers? Does that would help any?
Sure.
I think we've seen plenty of them.
Or you don't think that that'd be a, a very good idea?
Well, go ahead, come on.
I mean, this is what you're talking about, and some of them are quite funny, and some of them are, uh, quite ugly.
I just wanted to take it out of here, not at nine o'clock.
But I have here, you can go through that and see what shipping containers, that's just a few of the 50 we probably got.
Now, these are from town, obviously.
They're from town. A couple more are at the Bubbling Wells, and then there's, uh, a number of...
And...
Third world.
I mean, if that's what your town...
They had them on in Freeport, Bahamas, they had a lot of them.
Yeah.
No.
And the thing of it is, just to make a, a statement, people were wondering, and I was kind of curious, where Apple Valley ends and Hilldale starts. The comment is, Apple Valley ends at Coca-Pelli, and Hilldale starts from Coca-Pelli on because of all the shipping containers.
Yeah, it looks like somebody's using it for a fence.
Huh?
Looks like somebody's using it for a fence.
Oh, they are. They use them for a lot of things, and then you're gonna find them on vacant lots, I'm dealing with one right...
Yeah, they drop it off, and then, you know, it's...
You're familiar with the one I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's two of them over there.
So is this down there?
Yeah, so we're having new construction.
That might be it.
Yeah.
I just have a question. I know some people say, well, you can't tell people why they put on their property, because it's their property, but if you look on anybody that owns a piece of land, anybody that has a house, look at your warranty deed, and when, you know what it says on the warranty deed. The owner of this property is subject to town rules, regulations, and county ordinances.
It says no shipping container.
Is, uh, where are you seeing that, Jen?
It's in, it's in our town ordinance, on the website.
I read it, too, I, I can't...
No shipping container.
That's, that's...
It just says no shipping containers unless they meet the requirement.
Unless they meet the requirement.
2010.
I agree, we're talking about...
No, no one, no one, 20-foot containers, what it used to say.
July 2010.
We've tried to break them on our street, we've gotten rid of them.
Yeah, come over to our neighborhood. Yeah.
You're not as pushy as people.
So, I mean, that's what, that's what we need to talk about, is that we had kind of changed it, so it limited it quite a bit, um, and that it would eliminate the 40-foot ones, right? That it was limiting at least to this, the, what, the 20-foot ones?
No, we didn't, that, if, if you're talking about what was looking at the night, we didn't do that.
Well, sorry, we're going to send it to the phone.
Okay, so that's those things, yeah, so you're not gonna be able to get a 40-foot one, right?
Yes.
Okay, on 10, dot 28, dot 23...
All it's saying is if it's bigger than 200 square feet, you have to have a building permit.
You're supposed to, but that blew in the head and...
No shipping containers, cargo containers, shipping crates, box trailers, or similar pieces of equipment, or objects shall be used as accessory buildings unless set container meets the requirements of this section.
Right, unless.
Right, and so, but, okay, so I guess, are we wanting to try to make it work, or are we wanting just to say no?
Let's just no.
I say no.
Maybe by allowing any, we open the door if we just have...
You're right.
None. And obviously, the ones that are out there now, what?
I, I don't think, I don't think we should say none, because we have a big area out there, there's people that have agricultural property, they put it by their barn out...
That's a different story with agriculture and residential, a whole different column warrant.
So, that, that ought to be something that's one acre, if anybody with one acre or less has to be in this. It should be two acres or less. Okay, well, say two acres.
Five acres or less.
Well, four point seven five for that. Five acres is a pretty big chunk of property to be able to...
But, you know, why shipping containers?
It should be agricultural, that's what it should be.
Yes, yes. Richard, I wanna show you something, Richard.
So you can have an agricultural piece of property that's...
The one with the coke machine? They're down there somewhere.
Here's the problem, Richard, is people take advantage, so then you want to put crap like this all over the damn place. Yeah, just take, take a look at some of the pictures here, Richard.
Look at all the garbage all around.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one is amazing, isn't it?
Yeah.
You gotta pull up pictures of relevant container. Where's the one with the coke machine?
Where's the one, where's the one behind the used bit?
No, it's not over here.
You know, another thing is, what, what do you, what do you...
You read it as well.
What do you define as, as a front yard?
See, this, this, well, first off, this guy has not five acres, but this guy does, this guy does.
Well, you need to let that guy know with the coke machine, he was on a coke...
Let the, let the board handle it.
He does.
And where are they, where, where are they supposed to be? That, you know, like a...
Well, they're supposed to, it's be, you know, um, by the, behind the front line of the house.
Okay.
So...
So like they have a garage in front, it's supposed to be behind, it's a whole line, you know, from the front, most front point of the house. So the living quarters.
It should, well, I don't know if it's really living quarters, or if it's the footprint itself.
Footprint of the house is the garage, of the garages and...
Yeah, so you take that horizontal line from the foremost part of the house, and it has to be behind that, so...
Everybody's living in here, that's what I have.
The bit behind that inside yard. I, I guess, I, I don't want to be the one making this decision here, but what are...
Well, we did make this decision, uh...
And then we, and then we tried, and then we tried to accommodate, and it's, I think it's just gonna open up the can of worms.
Yeah.
I'd like, no, it'd be considered garbage. I like that.
What do you think about, you can, you can do a shipping container, but you do have to get a building permit, and we're going to have rules in that building permit.
But then if there's a non-conformity one, it's like, why do I have to get a building permit? These buildings are big buildings, and they're the same size, and he doesn't have to have a building, because it's not...
Right, is what I understand.
If, if you, if you build a shell, which is where peace, market, or affirmative, like, absolutely, it's a one, it's a way to... Right.
So you're saying they're gonna, you're not saying...
Okay, we have too many conversations.
Yeah, but you gotta do both sections.
Okay, so what I'm, this is what I'm saying, but this is just me, and you guys can shot me down or whatever, but I'm saying we could fix 10 really easily by just saying, no shipping container, cargo container, shipping crate, box trailer, or similar piece of equipment shall be used as an accessory building.
Or shall be moved onto the property, period.
No, you can't do that, because people use them for temporary storage.
I think we have some...
We have to be a little bit, a little bit lenient about that.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
Yes, we do, because people have rights, too.
I drove 1,200 miles when I saw three of them, Richard, Richard, so I don't, I don't think, you know, Apple Valley is any different than any other place in the United States.
I drove all of the United States.
Well, so... I just wanna make a suggestion that maybe you have two versions, you have the no shipping container version, and then as, as basically another version that if you have to have them, this is what you would allow, just to hear them.
That's a priority, you mean, or...
Well, no, for anything, just because then when you have the hearing, if you have a lot of people who say we want them, and a lot of people who say we don't, then you have two options.
Well, we have, unless, um, container meets the requirements in this section.
And they don't.
The, the house, working like the house.
Yeah.
But then we can't say no.
I, I don't, I think that this one is actually better, just because it says nothing over the 200 square feet, and I, I mean, I think if you're gonna allow them, I wouldn't allow the larger ones. I just think that you ought to have some parameters built in, some ideas that if, if the public says, hey, we want them, what do you have to offer them for that option?
I don't think you need to go by the public, you know, go by your decision up there and what the code says.
The purpose of a public hearing is to hear their input.
They never, they never done anything with what the public wanted any before?
That just made me feel bad, didn't it, right?
I'm gonna start the laker, you know?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
You're gonna get a big yelling match, and that's what you want, and that's fine, so...
But it does look like Hilldale.
Well, like, Richard, before you...
It looks like Hilldale, I couldn't tell the difference.
Maybe, maybe we could have something, if you're, if you're zoning agriculture, maybe you could do something on the side yard.
How about if they just have to be approved with planning commission?
Well, that, that, that's easy enough, I mean, they, they're, it's gonna be more of a permit, they need to make it look good, they need to paint it, they need to do something, they can't leave the, the junk that he's got pictures of.
That's all pointed out here, but unless you actually make them come in and get a permit.
Well, that's, that, so, doesn't it say that if you're gonna be over 200 square feet, you have to have a permit, end of story?
Yeah.
I, I would say that, I would take the 200 feet out.
Any container needs a permit.
Now, that's fine, I, I'm...
But maybe that's the thing.
Any, any, any general agreement, Richard, and this is what we have.
It's in there already.
But that's the, that's the beef here.
It's in there.
And, and the time you point after these people, well, you're gonna have to make the roof match, you're gonna have to make the siding match, the color match. I'll give you an example.
They're like, well, it's cheaper than that, and then you say, well, knock yourself out.
Let me give you an example that just happened. They're building a house over my area, and I went to them, and I told them, you got a shipping container that doesn't belong there, because you don't even have a permit yet, you don't have a permit yet, you don't have anything.
Yeah.
And he didn't believe in the town code. Well, he came in, and we had a staff meeting the very next morning, and what was said at the staff meeting from the mayor, and Ben will testify, Michelle will testify, or say it. The mayor told him, make it exactly like your house, and we'll approve your set of permits. That is what the mayor said when Michelle and Ben and I was there, a week ago. So, okay, they were fine, well, husband and wife, they teach him for donuts, and they said, oh, we'll do that. Then all of a sudden, within the last couple days, they found out how expensive it was for a 40-footer. So now, I have a letter in my briefcase right here, and they said they changed their mind.
To remodel the 40-foot shipping container, yeah, that's my fault.
That, to match stucco it, lath it, uh, uh, chicken wire, whatever you need to do.
So they changed their mind, and what are they gonna do instead?
They said in the letter, as I have it right here, that, hey, guys, just let us use it there, and we'll store all our material in it, and they'll work it and everything, and we'll use it as an accessory building, for storing for the construction job, that they haven't even got their permit approved yet, and I got...
And once they'll, they'll haul it away?
That's what they said, but that's just a word, because right next to them is the barn, and right there at the barn, I was in court, when they also said that, hey, when we're done with our barn, then we'll haul it away. It's still there, and now they got two of them, and you got pictures of it, two of them side by side. So what do I do now? I say, I sent them a red tag and a letter, and say, get it off the property, you don't have it there as an accessory building, and besides, you don't need two shipping containers side by side, that look so awful in our area, and, and when will testify to that? My solution as a code enforcer is the 40-foots need to go to help me, and the 20-footers, you know, people can paint those, there's one in our area, and just to give you an example, she wrote a nuisance complaint against one of the other shipping containers, and because the town did not do anything, less than a month and two months ago, she said, I'm bringing one in, and I'm gonna put one in, because I know the town ain't gonna do anything. The 20-footers paint them and make... And I'm going to put one in because I know the town ain't going to do anything. The 20 footers paint them and make them look. And as long as you don't have two and three, because I also got a young lady that's building a house over there and it's selling and she says, I'll take two or three of them and I'll put them in my front yard. Now, maybe she was joking because she could use a lot of 20 footers. You've got to stop it at one and you've got to get rid of the 40 footers. That's just a code enforcer's idea.
Sounds good.
They're just coming in too fast and you don't see a lot of them out in the country. You see them here and there, but go to Hilldale, we look like Hilldale with shipping containers. I just drove Bubble Creek, Bubbles Creek?
Bubble Creek.
Lumber Wells. I just drove that out there and they're coming in like mad and I've got to call and actually, this young lady right here, she can testify that there's one by a neighbor of hers that looks like he's clearing out a spot for one. He took a dozer and then cleared him out a nice spot and then I got another one across from me that they cut out part of the mountain and put one there.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
Yeah, you have to look at it and the picture is there of nice big blue one. And people, I couldn't find it today, but people do live in them. You can put air conditioner, you can put a swamp cooler, you can do whatever you want to them. And there is a compound out there and the thing of it is, there was one right across from me and I think Cynthia can testify that had a refrigerator unit on it and it was there for about six months.
Well, for anything that require electricity, they need a building.
Do they?
Yeah.
But they, the problem is, I can't find some of them and I don't know what they got. I can't go on their property and some of them are 10, 15, 20 acres. I got aerial views of those out there and there's a big compound up about there.
Rich, you need a drone.
Need a drone. You're not allowed to. Okay, so if we're going to, um.
I'm, I'm good with anything. Allow a few of them.
I think.
Be done along, but I don't.
Well, if you allow a few of them, you're going to have to open the gates.
I'm not asking 200.
The 20 footers, less than 200 square feet.
But, but even then, I think they ought to have a building.
Okay, so this is how I rephrase number 10. Any shipping container, cargo container, shipping crate, box, trailer, or similar piece of equipment to be used as an accessory building shall require a building permit and meet the requirements of this section. No more than one shipping container of any size allowed per lot and no 40 foot container is allowed in residential areas.
That totally works. That would help me.
And.
Now, what do you do about the ones that are existing?
Well, they're still, they're still not legal.
They're not.
There, there was nothing that ever made them legal, so.
Right?
They're, they're illegal.
They're illegally.
That's what I see.
2010.
Okay. Okay, that's.
Yeah, look at the code, 2010, that's good. So, so they have to be brought, you know, they have to get rid of their 40 foot ones and they can have a 20 foot one and.
It's got to be painted or look like.
There's none according to this.
But they still cannot be on vacant lots.
Right.
They're not having.
But you have a yard, a side yard.
accessory building you cannot build unless you have all the building permits.
Which, which is why if they have to get a building permit, they won't be able to it, and put it on a vacant lot. So I think requiring a building permit for no matter the size will hopefully down that a little bit.
No, right.
Now, Mayor Moly didn't want to stress the, um, they should be made to match. Where is that?
Well, number six.
So if they have to get a building permit, then we can control it that way.
Yeah, number six says.
I think he wanted to put in there.
Shall be constructed of similar materials and colors and be in architectural style beside and blend with the primary building.
And I know it says it in Syrinx, but yeah, I can see the point. It wouldn't be bad to restate it down here.
Well, they'll say, and meet the requirements of this section.
Right, which, that is part of the section, but he, he didn't think it's quite.
We can be redundant and describe.
Okay.
And it's easier to be redundant than trying to explain it.
Maybe if they were set in the back, it wouldn't be so bad, like the back door.
Yeah, I, I do think that the ones that are out there now, the, the least that can happen is in the back and they should like have a fence so people don't have to look at it.
And that's a good idea, but the one that cut part of the mountain out, I mean, took part of the mountain out, it is sitting in the back.
There's one, I know on that Little Creek Road, that's just right there on Little Creek Road, behind a fence.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
But some of them can't put them in the back because they've, mountainous in the back like in Albury.
Unless they cut them out now.
And they took, they took them a month and a half to do it.
Maybe a rock slide area, I know.
Wow. I had not seen this one. Now, this, this one, this is one you talked about.
That's the one that cut the mountain out. Not only did they cut the mountain and they did it in front of my house for a month and a half, they took all the boulders off the back and moved them to the front and then they put a driveway in and that's our vacant lot.
I don't think you even need to put a.
That's the house there.
Well, then how?
Well, no, because.
That's in the backyard. That's, that's just in the yard.
It's in the yard, yeah. We want them.
That's a vacant lot.
Building permit.
That's a vacant lot.
Well.
And so that's why.
You red tagged that, I guess.
I red tagged seven of them. Seven shipping containers I red tagged.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, um.
I, I heard you mention that.
And the red tags idea, people don't believe. Only two people came to the town over it because they said, you guys ain't going to do anything.
Meet the requirements of this section.
So we need to, to, to some of that. We need to fix them so I don't have the job of going around.
Yeah.
Must be.
And I don't want.
Yeah, take it one day. Then clean it twice.
Yeah, blah, 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 blah. And then it can go to no more than one shipping container of any size allowed per lot and no 40 foot container is allowed in residential areas.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And so that was really the only thing we were having to worry about, right, this one, right?
Yep.
Okay. And so then the next one is the parking requirements of private recreational vehicles in residential zones.
When you guys decide on the 21st, what, what did you decide on the 21st?
Well, if they are going to also need, if they get a building permit and that building permit process will require them to make them match the house. So.
Architectural style, well.
Okay.
No 40.
More house.
And no 40s, no 40s in residential areas.
Side yard, backyard, whole lot.
Well, the problem is that your side yard, if it starts at where the, like, like the Palmer's out, out in our area, so it's like in the, it's like 25 feet back because if the garage is, is considered the front of the start of the house and so that line, so he has it like right there, it's like 25 feet from the road. In the front, it, it, it's in the, it's in the side, it's off to the side, but that's considered the side yard.
And you have a picture of it there too, of it.
Well, we could, all we can do is get this into the code and then take it from there. I mean, if, yes, it's going to be in the side still, um, as long as it sits behind the front setback. Um, but they have to at least make it look better, you know, they have to, and they can't have 40 foot ones.
They're trying to prevent more, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, prevent, prevent more and get rid of the ones.
That's the garage part.
Hopefully they'll just appear.
But if it's, they consider the garage as.
I just, I, I'm, I don't know, I don't know, I'm believing anybody.
I would be willing to work with that code as much as you hate me to.
I mean, but just try to.
They can match the house.
How we manage to overcome it.
That came from.
Yeah, this is, this is not.
From, um.
This isn't.
Fire, fire.
We're just preparing what we're wanting to present to hearing and see what happens with that.
I'd like to say, we may have.
It's going to be a fun night.
We've got that one thing.
Yeah, especially since we have all these hearings.
Just a question, so the 40s in place right now, are they going to be required to move them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're illegal.
But they're already illegal according to.
And, and that's, that's why we shouldn't have a shadowing match at any.
Right, because then they're already out of, yeah.
They're already out of plan.
Since 2010, already.
And just a side note, the people that wants to move them in, I have two that wants to move them in. I've already let them know that it's going to be a problem. And the one that did move it in, moved it in anyway. So I'm trying to tell people that I talk to that, please don't do this.
And moving on, moving parking.
Okay, well, in our, in our previous packet, we have the, our B1.
We just needed a new section for visiting.
People need to read the code. Okay, so we were going to, can we finally?
We're going to require a parking permit. We were going to do this one, the same as this one.
I need to have a required permit.
Online.
Well, let's all say 30 days.
30 days. He left it at 30 days. We don't belong on it to.
Okay.
It has to be inside or in the rear of the, of the property. Same 30 days and need 30 days.
D we really didn't get to, so.
That's what we're trying to add.
Okay, so, well, we were wanting to say something about.
If, if we're not going to change the dates, then it doesn't matter if it's owned by the law owner or not, if it's a crime area thing.
Sure.
If there's a property placed that already entitled here.
By family members' board yet.
Yeah, and we took out greater than 120 days.
Yeah.
That's.
So we probably need to add the one. Some of you probably don't need B then.
Well, this for visiting people. Visitors is R V.
But I think it says, oh, because.
That's the owners' R V.
Okay.
As, as a member of the community, I would like to tell them to hear. It doesn't say that. Oh, it does have a heading. Then maybe we need to add, you know, a warning date.
I don't know if they even need to. They'll have to be a private.
Well, like, if I may have my kids come up here and stay as an RV, I just gave it this one, one law, I didn't fill out an application for 30. And if they stay longer than that, they're home.
You know.
Because I would know, I would let them, um, then they could fill out another one. I think there should only be three permits, um, available.
Well, then do we need to have the phrase that owns by the property owner?
Yeah, that's, does matter. The marketing rear is screened for front yards and streets by wolf and.
I agree. You could say that, right, but then that will cover whether it's.
My horse trailer and my trailers now have.
If, yeah. If we take out owned by the property owner.
Yeah.
And we don't need, uh-huh. Trailer because whether it's owned by the property owner or a visiting person or maybe park something.
Well, these, these things ought to be restricted through terms of one acre lots, not, not lots like yours or Derek.
Well, it needs to clarify.
Okay, that's what.
They can't, okay. Okay. Um, okay. We're wanting to keep it, keep revisiting RVs off the streets, right?
Yeah.
So, but if we take off owned by the property owner off this, then that means that all of these can be, whether it's property owner or visiting.
Yeah.
And it had to be property. Probably. So owned by the property owner or.
Or visiting.
Or, yes, not the owner.
I'm grabbing, I'm grabbing property thinking about somebody else.
I was good with living the whole life.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that too, that's easier.
Yeah.
Are we talking?
Okay, what are we doing with the year? Because I forgot. We're, we're deleting that because of the year.
Are we talking to parking areas?
And then that.
Yes, for RVs. Okay, on B, you don't show the commercial vehicles like tractor trailers.
Yeah, well, that was something that we needed.
That's not very helpful vehicles. We're, this is just recreational vehicles.
Yeah, but you need to add the parking in there because it's a parking requirement. So, but, but just for RVs, there's a different place. But you have a different thing for a commercial? Where is, uh, commercial, it's just moves.
They can't park on, on, uh, public roads, no commercial vehicle.
Do we have that?
The fifth, the fifth heading just specifies parking requirements of private recreational vehicles in residential zones.
Because I've never seen anything on commercial vehicles, well, there's nothing, nothing on commercial vehicles.
I needed that.
So, we're going to work on that.
But that would need to go in a different place, right, for the section.
Yeah, that'd be a.
If we've had a trailer parked and see your point, that tractor trailer parked for six months and we told them we had to move them and he told us to kiss our, you know what?
And I spent a lot of time with the sheriff on that and they don't have no jurisdiction.
Yeah, he can't. He said it's got to be a civil matter. Well, that, that is, it's kind of a different situation. I can find it, it's in here somewhere, but you can't, you can't do that.
But.
I don't remember.
But we would be putting that in a different section though.
Right.
Yeah. So we're, so we need to make sure.
Do we have a section for that?
The horse says it's.
I'm, I'm sure we did, I don't, I don't.
Day. Or during the.
Okay, so we're just, we're just talking about the RVs right now, so.
Okay, yeah.
So obviously, we'll need to make sure when we're in that section that we get it covered, okay? Because, yeah, that's, that's a problem. Okay, so what are we doing here?
The sheriff.
Well, that was all we had to do on that.
Okay, so if we make it so it's a general for no matter who owns it, then the properly placed should make it so they can't park it on the road. Okay, okay.
Tiger.
Okay. All right. So I didn't hear that.
Renewable will come in required.
And where is that being? Um, at the end of C. You've got it written down.
Yeah.
But we should address the, uh, commercial vehicles on private roads because, say, George.
Well, yeah, I mean, and we will, but we need to make sure it's what they're talking about.
Public, public roads, not private.
Of course, figure, figure that out where that is.
That'll be a different, yeah, that'll be a different hearing for a different.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, Lee gave Perkins and. Okay, so then what we have left is approval of the minutes for August 14th and August 21st. Oh, yeah, that was that, the special extra meeting. Okay.
Well, where does that go?
From the 14th. Yes, I'll say the second one, but we'll have four anyway, so we're fine. All right. Okay, so did everyone get a chance to?
I move that we approve the, the planning commission minutes from August 14th, 2019.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Then for the 21st, also reviewed and no issues?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, so I move that we accept the minutes for August 21st, 2019.
Aye, second.
Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Same.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Which leads us to.
I vote A.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, but then we have, all that we discussed today, we have in hearing next time, but some other stuff.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing says motor vehicles, yeah. I'm sure of that.
No, it's got, it's got to be changed.
But then we haven't found it.
But it does, it says motor vehicles.
Good night. Good night. Good night.
You need a lot of reflection. In our area, they just set a 40 or 53 foot container out there, all of this.